Okay, good evening. Come back into session and at this time we'll stick to our advertised public hearing time and we will suspend the rest of our county agenda and go into our public hearing with the Lee County Planning Board. I'm about to call on Mr. Downey again. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. As the Madam Chair indicated, this is really, if you look at your abstract on page 1214, this is a continuation really of a public hearing. You may recall that this item was presented, staff did a kind of a detailed overview of what's being proposed. Just to be clear again, we're talking about three amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that would really try to address oil and gas extraction mining in Lee County. Per the abstract, you can see we actually did a, you may recall, we did a public hearing to this-
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. As the Madam Chair indicated, this is really, if you look at your abstract on page 1214, this is a continuation really of a public hearing. You may recall that this item was presented, staff did a kind of a detailed overview of what's being proposed. Just to be clear again, we're talking about three amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that would really try to address oil and gas extraction mining in Lee County. Per the abstract, you can see we actually did a, you may recall, we did a public hearing to this board back in July. At that hearing, once we, once staff concluded the report, there were several folks who came up and spoke and asked a lot of questions kind of about the process, really wanted to learn more information about what was being proposed. Based on that, the board directed the staff to conduct a public, what we call a public information meeting. We did that. We held a public information meeting on August the 24th in the Gordon Wicker Room. It was pretty well attended, I believe, estimated about 40-plus people, give or minus, attended that. At that meeting, we did a in-depth PowerPoint presentation that covered really three key issues. We covered why there was a need to have the rule change, what process we used, which I think was important, and I'll talk about that a little bit, reiterate that if you all might, to get to where we are tonight, and really what kind of the contents or what was kind of the substance matter as it relates to the proposed changes, what was being proposed. In addition to that, we also created a website, web links, and tried to make this information easily accessible to the public, both the county site as well as some links on the city site as well. Again, trying to do additional outreach to allow folks to have access to the information. Having said all that, we are back in front of you tonight. We re-advertized this in the interest of, because it had been basically two months since we first presented this. I've kind of hit the highlights, I guess, of the staff report. I won't go into all the same detail because I presented this once before, but again, I really want to kind of touch on those three key points like I did at the public information meeting. First and foremost, I think you all are probably well-versed on this, but really the main reason for this, of course, is oil and gas extraction is kind of due to North Carolina. The General Assembly's quite made quite a few changes. The work of the Mining and Energy Commission, in addition to that, has done quite a bit to try to set forth rules by which this industry will be regulated here in North Carolina. As staff monitored this process and as we kind of went through looking at our own ordinance and our own land use regulations, we did feel compelled to see what options that were available. We were kind of tasked by certain elected officials and the Joint Planning Commission of looking at that issue and seeing what we needed to do for our local code kind of up to speed. In doing so, what we found was there did appear to be some leverage, if you will, in the state rules to look at local rules, and that's kind of highlighted, again, I went through this, I think, at the last hearing, but it's highlighted on page 216 and 217 of your report. Particularly at the top of page 217, you can see some of the information on a response that we received back from the Institute of Government. And what we did, of course, is, once we created the draft rules, we took those draft rules to our Joint Planning Commission, which is, again, just to remind, and for the benefit of the public, that is a group of three elected, or three officials from Broadway, three officials from the county, and three officials from the city of Sanford that meet collectively. They review all our proposed changes to any of our land use codes. The point there is there's kind of a checks and balance system in place, and it really has worked well since the UDO was adopted in 2006. Based on the direction of the Joint Planning Commission, they felt that the staff rules, they kind of made some changes of that, some content changes, but they also wanted to get a different opinion, an additional opinion, if you will, not just from our local attorneys, but also from the Institute of Government. So again, on page 217, you can see what staff felt like was more or less a positive response from the Institute. So we felt like, based on that, and based on the endorsement of the Joint Planning Commission, we wanted to move forward with the public hearing on the proposed rules, which is how we got to this point in July, and kind of bring you up to speed here. As far as the actual content, beginning on page 219 of your packet, this is really the key and heart and soul of this amendment, if you will. This is a kind of excerpt, a pullout from our land use matrix from our UDO. This really illustrates the change that we're talking about here. First and foremost, you'll notice there's now, there's two line items that are proposed in the UDO, mining and quarries except oil and gas, that essentially addresses and maintains rules for traditional strip mines and quarries. And then the bottom one, or the one below that, is a new category for oil and gas extraction. So what you're doing there is we're creating a new line item to deal with oil and gas extraction. The second major issue there is if you look across that bar, what you're looking at there is, you can see at the top, there are headings for the individual residential, commercial, and industrial zoning districts. And what this does is it establishes where those land use categories for those two land use categories are allowed. You can see, as proposed, it's limited to RA, residential agricultural, which is primarily just a county zoning district. It dominates quite a bit of the county. And then it's also, it's a special use permit, and additionally, light industrial is a special use permit, which is in the city, county, and the town of Raleigh. And then heavy industrial, which again is in all three jurisdictions, it is proposed to be allowed by right. And when I say by right, that means staff-level approval, as opposed to having to go in front of the Board of Adjustment. So I'll pause there if there's any questions about that, but that's really kind of the heart and soul. This is, if this were approved, this is what if a developer, or rather, someone from the oil and gas industry, or somebody from a strip mine, any type of mine, will come through our door at the Woodland Avenue office, this is what we would use to kind of guide them as to what process they would need to go through. In addition to that, any of the districts you see with a dash, just to be clear, that means they're not permitted in those zoning districts. Okay, there's no questions there? Again, on page 20, 220, rather, the next section really just kind of is just a reflection, there's no change in this, but I just thought I'd include this in your packet. These are the existing additional standards that currently apply to quarries and mines. And if you jump over to page 221, these are, these are brand-new rules that we are proposing and that was endorsed by the Joint Planning Commission specifically to oil and gas extraction. This was probably the more challenging aspect of coming up with these rules as it relates to oil and gas, because I think I talked about this, I know I did at the, at the public information meeting, but I believe I also talked about this at the last public hearing. Part of the challenge with this is if the rules that the Mining and Energy Commission and the state has kind of set forth, they're very exhaustive, they did a great job in trying to kind of cover everything, if you will. So one of the things we have to do, challenge-wise locally, is we have to try to, what, basically, what authority do we have to add additional rules? Because if the state's doing it, we really can't supersede what the state is trying to address. So what we try to do is we try to go through and we looked at all the different kind of categories we typically find for supplemental standards, and we tried to find if there were any vagueness or any things that we didn't feel were clearly addressed. And that's what you see there on page 221 and 222, we tried to come up with some additional standards. And Madam Chair, I'll pause if there's any questions.
Any questions, so far?
Actually, it's, it may be, I think it's a repeat, and it's like 223 and 224 repeated the same thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. We've had some people sign up for public comments during the public hearing. It's not necessary to sign up, but I appreciate those that did. Is there anybody that wants to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, I'm just trying to kind of get a feel, okay. If it's okay with you, then I'll just start with the list and then we'll move forward from there for those that didn't sign up. I apologize for the misunderstanding. Okay, Jean Reynolds?
Yes.
Henley Road?
Hi.
Come on up, welcome. And if you could, three minutes, you know, for each one, and, excuse me?
This is for, this is usually for against, or?
Just comments.
It's at the pleasure of the board, uh, Chair, that we're doing for and against, that's what we've normally done, but we put the sign-up sheet out there, so it's going to be-
It's sort of, right, so we'll just-
Not in order.
We'll listen very attentively.
And three minutes, huh? Okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
All right. Jean Reynolds, I'm a fourth-generation landowner in Lee County. Also served on the steering committee for the writing of the UDO, small area plans for Deep River Greenwood. Served on Board of Adjustment for nine years. Some of you I know. And first of all, I think that you need to separate oil and gas permitted uses from the mining and quarry. Secondly, I am against any changes to the oil and gas, so far as special use permits go. Those of us who own land that have oil and gas under them have been attending workshops for over four and a half years. I'd like to know how many county commissioners have been to workshops for four and a half years. These held by NC State University, as well as by Dr. Ken Taylor, who is North Carolina's own state geologist. Dr. Taylor's presentation last spring in 2014 was quite informative, so far as all of the changes that have been made with the protections and the precautions for the oil and gas drilling. I doubt that there is any other expert out there qualified to give information like he presented to us for the protection of our aquifers, our land, as well as the attorneys that are there that are ready and willing to help us in writing our leases and garnering the best that we possibly can, not only for the protection of our resources, but also for the protection of our future generations inheriting our properties. So I would hope that each and every one of you would appraise yourselves of the same education that I and other fellow landowners who are here have done so through the cooperative extension, through our attorneys and others, rather than just take and make a change. I can also state that planning staff has put back into the UDO and the use matrix uses and restrictions on residential agriculture land that was taken out from public hearings that were held originally on that UDO. I have all the documentation, from the original first drafts to the final, as well as all the public hearing comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Okay, Jerry Merritt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jerry Merritt. I live in Trace, Wake, Carolina Trace, and I'm here to ask the board to consider text changes to the UDO, specifically as it relates to mining and quarries. I suspect there's not a person in this room that's not aware of the fact that the Little River Quarry application is pending before the Board of Adjustments. What I found amazing with this process is that an unelected board can approve a quarry and without taking into consideration at all the 1,543 homes right across the street from it, right across from 87, with a taxable value of Lee County of $325,800,000, and taxes of 2015 of $3,010,000. Now, what I think is interesting is that with the, if this application for the Little River Quarry is approved, there is well-documented evidence in the professional literature that confirms that this property will lose anywhere, that the Carolina Trace properties will lose anywhere from 10% to 20% of their value. So the impact on the Lee County taxes is anywhere from $300,000 to $600,000 a year. What I find amazing is that an unelected board can approve this, and by regulation, without giving any consideration to what I just told you. So I strongly support a change to the text on the UDO and a special section for mining and quarries. And if the board isn't prepared to do so, then I would strongly support a moratorium to give you adequate time to consider how you might regulate mines and quarries in Lee County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Marcia Ligon.
I am Marcia Ligon, 1413 Pembetta Path in Sanford. And as a citizen, I'm proud, and as a member of E. Lee, I'm grateful that you are considering drafting a moratorium on oil and gas development within our county boundaries. We're passing out some, our own moratorium, as we wrote it, after Chatham passed theirs. So, and then we found out that you were considering the same, so we wanted to give you a copy of our thoughts. A 32-months moratorium on oil and gas development will provide the county an opportunity to update appropriate ordinances without being required approving such developments, during which time the Lee County Board of Commissioners should hire a consultant with expertise regarding oil and gas development, specifically hydraulic fracturing and their impacts on the natural, man-made, and social environments and its benefits and costs. The consultant, having proven to possess no conflict of interest, will be tasked to thoroughly study Lee County. What is specific to Lee County? Analyze state and federal regulatory programs and to report to the board the full range of expected impacts on Lee County. This study should be completed within the first year of the moratorium and include the consultant's conclusions as to whether additional time will be needed for thorough study. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Keely Wood.
My name is Keely Wood. I live at 363 Angel Road. I'm a Lee County resident, and I have also attended four and a half years of fracking meetings, and I am against fracking. I'm against forced pooling, and I don't think the MEC has taken the time to look at those rules and look at the people that are on split estates in our county. So like Marcia Ligon of E. Lee, I also ask the Board of Commissioners to look at other counties and what they have done. And Wake County is tonight looking also at a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Therese Vick.
Good evening, I'm Therese Vick. I'm with Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, and I appreciate the opportunity to make some brief comments tonight. I wanted to support the possibility of having a moratorium in Lee County. Your other communities in the state are realizing that the rule package, while significant, is not complete. For example, there are no specific requirements for air quality, which is a big public health concern. There almost, every day, there are articles about how air quality from fracking operations is affecting local communities. So, and as Ms. Wood spoke, she talks about split estates, with almost the entire community of Cumknock is on split estates, including the Cumknock Methodist Church, including the Baptist Church, one of the graveyards, and those folks have no protections. There were some things that were developed and looked at, but the agency, which is Deener, actually, they're gonna, their name's gonna change, it already has, to Department of Environmental Quality. So they're reorganizing again, that's another reason to put a hold on things. But that Deener did not support these landowner protections that were developed, so nothing was done. Legislature did nothing. As Ms. Montgomery pointed out, there's a lot of new environmental law that has come down out of this last session of the General Assembly that may or may not affect quarries and/or fracking. It's unclear because of stream buffers and so on that are changing in riparian areas, how that may or may not affect things. The new oil and gas commission, unless it has been appointed since the last time I checked, is not yet operational. This would be the commission who, a preemption request for a moratorium or ordinance or anything like that would have to come to, so they're not even operational yet. You're also, like I said, joining other communities that have realized that the rules are not protective enough. Anson County passed a five-year moratorium in 2013. Chatham County just recently passed a moratorium. Stokes County is considering a moratorium, they have a public hearing on Monday night, and there are some other cities that have passed such a thing. One thing I wanted to point out in the, and I fully agree with getting a consultant who does not have a conflict of interest to look at the, look at this brand-new industry, because it's not just brand-new to Lee County, it's brand-new to the state. And I feel like the residential agricultural areas leave, if, to leave it in the way that you all are going to be regulating fracking in those areas, an unelected board making decisions, and people may have to obtain lawyers with no landowner protections, especially for people on split estates. I wish you'd reconsider and look at that residential agriculture zoning designation and see if you can strengthen that a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Terrica Luxton.
Hello, I am Terrica Luxton from Sanford. I'm also with the Environmental League, and I just wanted to add along with everyone else that we do appreciate you considering the moratorium. We've been hoping for it for a long time. We're hoping that someday, North Carolina will have a moratorium. I will stress again that I speak to people often about the fracking. I speak to them about our coal ash issues. And one thing that I know that shocks people the most is the fact that split estates happen around here. What a lot of people don't know is there are split estates over on Carolina Trace. There's almost 20 different lots there. Surprise, but there are. There won't probably be fracking over there, but that doesn't mean, they should know that there are places of split estates. Most people don't. Nobody even cared to know. Have we even made a law yet that the real estate has to tell people? Because as of two years ago, I know of two real estate companies that were still keeping the mental rights. One was a $335,000 home that didn't, wasn't even on an acre lot, and gross realty kept the mental rights. Now, I can say that with a fact, because I've got the information. And the reason I'm up here is to let people know, you need to find out your rights, because most people don't know them. I've had people ask us, how come we're fighting against the quarry? I live right near there, and everybody wants to keep talking about Carolina Trace Park. I know people on the opposite side, I'm on the opposite side. Our land isn't worth that much, but the fact that I can't go out on Lee Avenue right now and ride my bicycle or even walk without being scared of the traffic and knowing that if that quarry comes through, the Commerce Road is also supposed to be opened up so that those quarry trucks can come down Lee Avenue, where they won't be checked on as much. So I'm up here more so, not so to tell y'all stuff, but to make sure that everybody back here knows too. Because what I hear the most is, is that right? I was at the farmer's market this weekend, and people don't know about the coal ash yet. They think that fracking won't come because there's a low gas. We need to let people know. And I do want to thank you so much for finally giving the Environmental Committee some strength, because I've been, I've been following this stuff for four years, and they haven't had any. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lux. Okay. Next speaker.
Commissioners, I am Jim Walmak. I live at 1615 Moon Trail Road here in Sanford. I was a former member of the Mining and Energy Commission, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as a citizen and landowner in Lee County. This ordinance, or this UDO that you have proposed in draft, as I said in a previous meeting, is a product of inadequate staff work. It is, there are several locations throughout the UDO that are in direct contravention to state statutes. I have offered my assistance to repair the UDO, and no one has seemed fit to contact me. I have spoken to a couple of individuals that are on the board about it, but no one has yet contacted me to try to get it in consonance with what the state statutes require. Basically, this UDO, or a moratorium that would be passed by resolution, would be a failure to serve your public purpose as a Board of Commissioners. I think you're sworn to uphold the laws of the state of North Carolina. You are not doing that if you pass this UDO, and you are consciously not doing that because you've been so advised. Even the lawyer that you went shopping for at the Institute of Government told you that only he could give you an opinion on the prima facie, or the surface of the proposed ordinance. He begged off the opportunity to comment on what the commission would likely do, or what the spirit and the intent of the state statutes were. He knows full well, Mr. Wisniewicz, that this is not a, this won't hold water with the state. He knows that this is invalid ordinance. And he didn't tell you that because he knew what the answer was that you wanted. So I think it's ironic that this Board of Commissioners would want to hang out a sign on the outskirts of Sanford saying, "Closed for business," because that's what this says to the oil and gas industry. It says, "Closed for business." It doesn't matter what the state laws require. It says, "Closed for business." I'm sorry if I'm interrupting you, Mr. Oldham, but if you know-
Disrespect.
Okay. So, "closed for business" sign is what you'd be hanging out here. And, you know, I know that that serves the purpose of some on the Board of Commissioners, but I think the public needs to know that by passing, willfully passing, an invalid and actually an illegal ordinance, that you are, you're just basically flaunting the state law and daring the appropriate regulatory body at the state level to overturn the ordinance for political purposes. And I think that's what this really, this charade is all about. Because I think you know that the details of the ordinance are not valid. Last time I checked, we were a nation of laws. And you pass this UDO, and you're basically saying you don't really care if we're a commission that observes the law. I think you're smart enough to recognize that, and I would hope that you would, you would take that into strong consideration before you pass this ordinance and waste a lot of people's time.
Mr. Walmak, I have a question for you.
Mr. Walmak.
I have a question.
It's a public hearing, I didn't think it was a Q and A.
Okay, never mind. Thank you.
That's a good one, that's a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just was going to ask which boards you had approached, the Planning Board or the Commissioners? You didn't make that clear, so I didn't know.
Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Denise Lee, and I'm here from Anson County. Anson County was one of the first counties in North Carolina to put a moratorium in force. We did it for several reasons, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that there are so many unknowns when it comes to gas fracking. If you, Mr. Walmak talked about how it puts up a sign that says, you know, that you don't want any industry coming in, I can't remember exactly how he said it. Actually, if gas fracking comes to a community, all you're going to end up with is dirty industry. And I think Lee County is a wonderful county. I've been here to your sporting facility. It's a wonderful thing. But you let gas fracking come into this county, and you're wasting your money if you put anything else into this county. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question, Ms. Lee? You put your moratorium in, in 2013, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you had any conversations or communication from the state on your moratorium from the legislature?
We have not been told that it is, can't be effective. Our vote was unanimous.
Okay.
And that's what you need tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Annette Booker, and I am a resident of-
Hi, I'm Annette Booker, and I am a resident of Carolina Trace. And I'm not going to go through all the environmental and water and traffic and all. What I want to say is five years ago, I moved to Sanford, moved to Carolina Trace because I had looked in Cary, Pinehurst, and I thought that Sanford was beautiful. That's why I moved here. I also was happy to see we were redoing the sidewalks in Sanford, in Jonesboro, that Sanford was having second Sundays gathering people, getting people to come into town. I thought that we were progressing in a really great way, and then here comes this quarry. Not only is it a quarry, it's directly across from a residential area and even amongst the farmlands and residents back in, off of Swan Station Road, and I'm kind of nervous talking. But I see nothing good. I've done a lot of reading about quarries, and it's dirty. It changes your landscape. The constant trucks going up, I mean, our traffic has increased since our bypass was put in. And right now, too, we have a number of trucks using that road, and there's been some dangerous situations coming from Walmart and when you merge onto 87. That's been pretty scary there at times. You have to be very careful with these trucks coming in. So, I have concerns with wear and tear on the road and who pays for it and water issues and contaminant issues for people who have lung problems, breathing problems. I mean, it just goes on and on, and I don't want to get on a high horse or anything, but I am totally, totally against a quarry right in the middle of a residential area. That's just the bottom line. And when I read that you were thinking about a moratorium, I was like, yes, a light, a light. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Booker. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, please, sir.
Good evening. I'm Vince Roy from Carolina Trace, and I would hope that any consideration of a discussion about moratoriums should consider the economic growth and the future of the county itself. There were two relevant and interesting sessions held last week. One on Monday night at Carolina Trace by the SAGA Group, the Sanford Area Growth Alliance. They met at Carolina Trace Country Club on Monday night. And then the following morning, a group of realtors and developers met at the city council. And the reports in the Sanford Herald show conflicting opinions about what is going on in Lee County. Chairwoman Dow Ripple said, made the statement that it's getting better every day in Lee County. And Mayor Mann came on board and said that we've begun to shift from a rural place to an urban place. At the same time, in the Tuesday morning meeting, the realtors and developers discussed the other side of the coin, talking about the negative elements about Sanford and Lee County. And they discussed in great detail, which we all know, that the effort to develop the northern part of the county and become part of the Research Triangle in terms of work, et cetera, et cetera, never materialized, and many developers left the county because of that. At the same time, Lee County with its growth program, we saw the development of the shops of Sanford and then Cameron Place, which is continuing to develop. The bottom line being that while the realtors and developers point out that the northern part of the county and even the western part of the county is not developing, it's at least 10 years away, the southern part of the county is in fact developing as it serves not only Lee County but Harnett and the northern part of Moore County. Further on, one of the developers and realtors went on to point out that they're looking for additional growth as Cumberland County stretches north, and we see the growth on 87, trying to incorporate the southern part of Lee County into that growth element. The couple of facts that they pointed out, that the population in Lee County, Sanford, is stagnated while the unemployment rate is growing. And that, and I didn't know this, but they pointed out that many workers that work in Sanford actually live in other cities and counties. So, I point out to you that as, in continuing the continued growth pattern of Lee County and keep it going south, that the introduction of a huge quarry, the Little River LLC quarry proposal, is bigger than most quarries that have developed in North Carolina. According to the resident engineer at DNR, most quarries that have developed in North Carolina are smaller and developed in rural areas, and any growth transpires after the quarry came and people moving in because they work around there. In this case, we have a residential population which was cited by the developers and the realtors in the Tuesday morning meeting, that Carolina Trace is a bright star in the area, not because we represent them, but because the attorney for the county lives there too. But it truly is. As I'm sure many of you know, as pointed out in a letter from Commissioner Smith to one of our residents, yes, we have two other quarries in Lee County, and they're operating well, only problems. That's not really a true statement, Commissioner, but nevertheless, both those quarries are relatively small, and the one up north in Moncur, the Lake Star, owned by a family, a very small quarry. And the one that's being proposed in accordance with, stated by the engineer at DNR, is a very large quarry, larger than most that they ever see coming forth for a permit request of the DNR.
I think, thank you, Mr. Roy, just in fairness to everybody else.
Well, let me just finish by saying that as you're developing your moratorium, I request that you seriously look at the economic element of Lee County and where it's going in that's in the south. And the biggest residential community that's affected by anything that's adverse to that growth is Carolina Trace with its over 4,000 residents and over $300 million tax base, which generates money for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Yes, sir.
I did like to say about this rock quarry deal.
Can we have your name, please, sir?
Gary Bullard.
Gary Bullard.
I live here next to the Lemus Burying Quarry.
Right.
And I told them, I said, "Y'all are kind of like chicken farmers and hog farmers. Everybody likes chicken. Everybody likes hog meat, but they don't want next to them." I've had these rock quarries next to me for 40 years. I know what they're coming from, but they're good neighbors. And so, if we're going to have all these rocks to go on our driveways, rocks to go on our highways, we're going to have to get them somewhere. If we're going to have hog meat eat, somebody's got to raise it. If we're going to have chickens, somebody's got to raise them. They got to be next to somebody. And so, I can't see why everybody can't get in their equal and take their part of the silo this week.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Beck, and I live in Carolina Trace. And yes, quarries have to be near somebody, near somebody within miles and miles away. They should be in rural areas where there aren't heavily densely populated residential commercial areas right next to them going to be affected. Where there isn't a highway with heavy traffic already, work traffic, that's going to be affected with 400 heavy trucks a day, 200 of them loaded with heavy rocks coming out onto a busy highway, there will be accidents, perhaps fatalities. The quarry itself will create air and water pollution. The diesel trucks will create more air and noise pollution. So, I think that the earlier statements of having a quarry located prox, next to a heavily populated residential area that serves Lee County very well is a mistake, and I hope the Board considers a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Me.
Hey there. Chicken was good.
Oh, thank you. I'm Estelle Bullard. I'm not used to speaking in public, but I would like to say I live near a rock quarry too, and it has not affected me in any way. And everybody has, I mean, most everybody that's against this is from up north. They come in here to Carolina Trace and try to tell Lee County how to do their business. And it's not fair to Lee County. I didn't say anything when you were speaking, so don't say anything.
I didn't insult anybody from the south.
Okay, okay.
If you don't like Lee County, you go up north.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, I am for fracking, I'm for rock quarries and anything else, and I hope y'all will agree with me.
Thank you, Ms. Bullard. Yes, sir. The gentleman behind you first, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that. I had not planned to do this.
My name is Kermit Keeter. I live in Carolina Trace. I was born and raised in North Carolina. I've lived in the south all my life. I have five children. Three were born in Texas and two in North Carolina. I'm about as settled as you can be. And I do live in Carolina Trace, and I like the people there and enjoy it. So, yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, in all fairness, we've got to be fair so we don't have people continuing to come up. Any other speakers? Okay? Is there anyone out in the hall that would like to speak? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, declare the public hearing closed. We may have some continued discussion if you want to stay around for just a few minutes. I'm sorry. Hello.
The Board will have continued discussion.
Yes, the Board will have continued discussion. Yes, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Grant. Okay. No, no, that's fine. Clarification's always good. Okay, Mr. Downey. Give us some guidance after, since this is a unique thing that we don't do very often.
As presented to you in your abstract, I believe the manager and staff had recommended to you, as typically the routing on this would be, you conclude your public hearing, we take it back to the planning board for their deliberation and recommendation to you. I believe you have a recommendation that you might want to consider a moratorium on this issue for your discussion as well. I will tell you, just for clarification, some of the comments that were made were about the Little River Quarry. I want to be very clear about that. That is not directly part of what's being on the table for you tonight. This is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance specifically to address oil and gas extraction. Now, there are, if you flip to page 219 in your packet when I was talking about the specifics on the matrix, there are proposed changes to the traditional mining that would be affected by this amendment, but that wouldn't directly impact the Little River Quarry. That application's already been made. That process is indicated, it is through the special use permit procedure, which is, of course, the Board of Judgment that you all appoint members to. I just wanted to be clear on that issue.
Thank you for that. So, the issue before the Board, as I understand it, is if you want to have discussion on the moratorium, then we need to dismiss, well...
I believe the attorney has recommended, if this Board, it's pleasure of the Board, of course, if you would like to consider moratorium, you would defer action on this item. I believe that's the correct terminology, which will basically freeze this process in place. That would mean that the planning board would not take up the action on this tonight and essentially be at the pleasure of this Board.
Is that clear to everybody?
Moratorium on the UDO change?
I believe it's a moratorium to study oil and gas and, you know, that could be, however, ultimately, that would be something that would have to be worked out, but it would basically be to not take action on this item tonight specifically.
I move that we defer the action being taken tonight in terms of moratorium.
On the UDO.
On the UDO, I'm sorry.
Changes.
On the UDO changes.
To, and by that motion, that we would consider a moratorium?
All the amendments.
You have to remember that a moratorium is going to be an ordinance, so it will require two readings, so we can discuss it all we want tonight, but we'll have to advertise whatever that moratorium's going to look like and come back with a public hearing on that and have two readings before it can pass.
And my understanding in talking with the attorney, please help, is that we would draft, or the attorney would draft the moratorium, and if it's the pleasure of the Board, bring it before us at our next meeting, and then we would start the public hearing process. Is that, have I got that? Okay. Again, new and sort of uncharted territory.
So, is that the motion?
Yes, the motion is to move to defer the UDO.
And that's the first motion, or do you want, do we need two different ones? Okay, so I could defer the UDO as the first motion. Any discussion?
I'm still not clear on the motion.
The UDO changes that were discussed in this public hearing, and we have, starting on page 2...
214.
214. Really, it's the changes that would start on...
219.
218.
218, 219. 219, that's correct, 219. So, you're just deferring action. We've had the required public hearing to take action on the UDO. We've had two readings, so the Board could act tonight to change the UDO if it wanted to. The motion is to defer action where they won't, where the Board will take action on the UDO tonight. By deferring, you can bring it back up again at a point in time, as long as there aren't any changes, I'm assuming, Madam Attorney, so, and do it again. If you do that, I think the planning board's going to leave because then our discussion is whether we want to move forward on drafting a moratorium.
Which would need a second motion to do that? So, right now, the motion is just to defer. Any other questions? Okay, call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, all right. Second motion.
The second motion is to...
Let Council tell us. Let Council tell us what it's supposed to be. Go ahead.
Your second motion would be to consider a moratorium and direct staff to draft a moratorium and bring back for your consideration at the next meeting.
That's what you were going to say.
That's what I was going to say. Same word.
She cleans it up so much better.
All right, whatever she said. That's my motion.
Any discussion on that?
Madam Chair, I know that there was a couple of counties who went out on a limb and proposed a moratorium, a natural grass drilling and such, but there's 100 counties in this state. And I'm just opposed to even considering a moratorium, and I think it's, again, sticking our finger in the eyes of the legislature and state government. And I would oppose it and I would encourage anyone else.
They're not proposing fracking in 100 counties.
Right, exactly. Do you have a motion? Any more discussion?
Of course.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. All right.
Just an announcement, if I may, Madam Chair. I just wanted to be clear to the public. That was the only item scheduled for the planning board meeting tonight, so the planning board basically will no longer have to meet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, folks. But maybe this early night will balance out with the fact that I'm discussing...
You still remember that, don't you?
They throw it back, hey.
Yes, yes.
We have some...
Thank you, sir. I, I do, thank you, sir. Okay, um... Yes, that's correct. It's, it's our next, it's our second, it's our second meeting in October.
Starting in October?
Uh, just, just for clarification, the, the, the next planning board meeting will be October twenty-first, which will be right after our meeting. Yes, I was correct. That was the question. Nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen, nineteen.
Do you know what time that would be?
We'll double check. Two o'clock, I don't...
Are they, we're talking about the board adjustment meeting?
Okay, I thought you said planning board. That's at two o'clock. Right, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question. I'm so sorry. Trying to get back in the groove. Okay.